I want to thank the Ramsdale for using his belly. Kind of feel like I should sing a song or something. I'm going to call this work session to order. Public comments on work session related items. If there is a public that would like to make a comment on work session related items. State your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mark Miller, 414 Seaver. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in the public comment period. I come to you tonight to speak in support of an important economic development project at 440 River, which is the boathouse building. It has been IDed in the past several years as a priority project for the city of Manistee in the redevelopment ready program with NBC. And the Chamber and other partners have, and the city have worked quite a long time to promote this opportunity and to bring in a development that would be worthy of a fantastic site. It's in a prime location on the riverfront. I think that it is important that these types of projects offer up an opportunity for voters and other folks to see our waterfront in a different way and to utilize the waterfront for commerce and for their recreational enjoyment. It's very important to note, if you've noticed and have driven past it or even have gone inside, the site needs a lot of work. It is a special project and our goal in working with the developer is to have a long-term, viable business that draws people to the site, to the riverfront, and to our community. We are very excited to have Ted Fracano with us tonight, and I will introduce him a little bit later, but he's a fantastic get, as I've heard from around our community. I was a great deal excited for that. And so I wanted to take the opportunity while I'm in public comment and to ask the city council to do what you can to consider everything that you can to support this long-awaited and important project in our community. So with that, I'll just ask for your consideration and for your support and look forward to working with each of you in the near future on this and other economic development projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Saying none, we'll move on to discussion of the Armory Youth Project. Armory Youth. I'm sorry? Yes. Mr. Taylor has asked for an addition from Ted Fracano on the work session to address city council to talk about his plans for the boathouse design and purchase of adjacent property. Also, I have a couple of things I would like to add to give council a chance to think about. I'd like to get a feel for the support the council might have in doing a resolution or a letter of support for the senior center of the project, the building request. And also, I'd like to have some input on an increase in maybe the marijuana licenses for those who already hold licenses but are showing real progress in wanting to enhance or enlarge your project. If there anybody who want to come out on those items. Very none, let's move on to discussion of local revenue sharing board grant, Armory Youth Project. We've got some people here. Please state your name and address again. Go ahead. Where are you going?
Valerie Bergstrom, 1224 Critter Trail. And the Armory Youth Project is at 55 West First Street. Mayor, city council members, manager, and guests. Thank you for the opportunity to ask for your support of safety enhancements to the Armory Youth Project. We need your support and approval to make grant application to the local revenue sharing board and armory head. I'm Valerie Bergstrom, this is Amy Bojoweski.
Hi.
She's our executive director and will both be presenting to you tonight. I'm going to begin by just talking a little bit about who we are and who are our regular community partners. The Armory Youth Project is a nonprofit organization that opened in the summer of 2017. We provide a safe environment for sixth through 12th grade youth to build community and to be encouraged in their educational, emotional, health, and spiritual development. Our programs include team sports, clinics for archery, basketball, baseball, soccer, and tennis, great concerts, classes including self-defense, art, building, mason, and beauty houses, and things like babysitter certification. We have over 400 students in our database registered in our system for around Manistee County. And we had over 1,200 students attend our last three months, and then we're closed for, you know, the pandemic by the governor's order. So we are excited that they're able to reopen for outdoor activities on August 3rd for both our youth and the community. So I'm just going to put a little plug here. Research shows that after-school programs reduce crime, boosts academics, improve behavior, lead to help their habits, and reduce costs to the community. We know that the peak time for juvenile crime during school days is between 2:00 and 6:00 PM, and that's the great, so the armory provides great value to help build future community leaders, employees, neighbors, to support our community. I also want to point out our partnerships. Our mission includes supporting local community. This year, in your packet is a list of other partners who have been at our project, including the big day of serving this year, even though it was outside and it was pandemic safe. You probably noticed in the front page of the paper recently that the Manistee community banned practices behind the armory in our fenced-in area at no charge. So when they do their concert, they got to practice with us first. I've also listed the city of Manistee. We consider you partners, we share the same party law, so we're happy to have that relationship. Prior to the pandemic, we were also in preliminary discussions with the Red Cross, the armory to be considered an emergency shelter, but we had to stop those discussions. They're actually scheduled in March. So if we ever get to that safe place again, I think that's another February opportunity for us to support the community. Now, I'm going to share a little bit about the safety enhancements that we're talking about today. We've taken a two-phase approach. The first phase was to apply for the Manistee County Community Foundation Minger Family Endowment for gym makeover. That makeover is going to allow us to remodel the gym, but more importantly, improve the security of the property. The key safety components of the Minger grant fund were cameras, backup battery, internet security measures, electronic swipe system, so that kids don't have to touch it if they when they come in, they can literally swipe in and we know that they're in our system, volunteers, anyone else that comes into our property. Fire extinguisher cabinet and inspection on our bleachers. The bleachers are old and beautiful, but we're going to try to improve the safety of them. There are many new things that have happened in creation of bleachers. We're going to do our best to improve the safety of those too. The space of our safety plan is primarily, what I'm talking to you about today, is primarily inside. The safety enhancements on, I think, page seven of your packet are the things that we'd like to include in the grant. They are both, they start inside, but there are also outside improvements. Amy's going to share the details of those. There are seven individual items. Thank you.
Oh, thank you for the opportunity to share this information with you. The safety features that we feel are in need of enhancement at the armory include interior building lighting. The Minger grant will provide lighting enhancements for our gym area, but not the other areas of the armory. And we have within the armory a bay area where we have student activities, as well as a padded gym area, which is also a area where students are involved. The lighting in both areas were original lights, somewhat modified over the years, but we are looking at replacing those lights with LED lights that will be more safety conscious, they will be more efficient, and they will provide adequate lighting for students that are in those spaces. The phone ring system is a system that was discussed with the ISD partner that we have. We have many people coming and going from the building, and because we have ISD students in the building, we have made it a lock door system. However, we have many people that will come to the door and we're not sure if it's for the armory or if it's for the ISD or any other entity. The ring system is a system that is currently used at schools that will allow us to recognize through camera crews at the door, as well as alerting the proper parties who needs to go in and to the door to let those people in. The night lock system was a system that was identified by our emergency preparedness program. We put together a program and asked for our local emergency personnel to come and evaluate, and through that conversation, they identified a night lock system that will be used to secure students if an active shooter would be on premises. The parking lot lighting will be obviously in the parking lot, and it will be used to enhance the lighting. Right now, we have two lights that provide adequate lighting in the summer when we leave the building, but in the wintertime, when it becomes dark very early, the lighting is inadequate to keep all areas very bright and very secure. The parking lot cameras is also another additional piece that we feel is necessary for the security and safety of the people that are leaving the building, I guess entering the building as well, but primarily leaving when it's dark out at night. Resurfacing of the south of the armory parking lot is a fenced-in area, and this area has currently cement and asphalt. And what we are requesting is to bring that all level. There are different pieces within that segment. Some are a little bit higher, some are a little bit lower. Weeds have grown through the cracks, and we're asking for an asphalt covering that would provide a safe and secure environment if we would have the students playing sports in that fenced-in area. When we opened up last one day, our intent is to keep students outside as long as possible due to the COVID experience, and we feel that that parking lot can be very useful. However, because of the different levels of cement and asphalt, it's not a very safe environment for kids to play pickleball or basketball on. So we keep that in mind and try to keep kids in ping pong and things like that, that they won't come to different levels to concern themselves when they're walking. We've also identified a locked fireproof cabinet and a Knox box, also identified through our emergency preparedness plan. The Knox box is an item that will be attached to our exterior wall and allow for emergency personnel access to every building to store our keys in that lot. And the fireproof cabinet would be to keep our records in. Right now, we have it stored in the basement, which is somewhat secure, however, it's not secure from fire. We have on the last page of our document, layout of our building to show the different areas, and I want to identify Bay One is the area that we addressed as far as lighting is concerned. Bay Two happens to be our padded gym area. And in that area, we have boxing equipment, and we have a padded floor for yoga and different activities of the like. And then you can see the parking lot. If you travel to the armory, you'll see quite a substantial parking lot, however, the majority is owned by the city, and we have a small portion on the west side. And that takes care of my piece of this puzzle. Do you have any questions?
We have any questions? How do we feel about supporting this request? Somebody got application of revenue sharing?
I don't, I don't have any problem supporting it whatsoever. I'm just curious how much you're asking for.
You know, we have been waiting for bids, and we had the bids for the lighting come in this afternoon, so I didn't have much of a chance. However, when I tallied up what I presumed to be a rough estimate, it was approximately $82,000. And we have the prices identified somewhat on the back pages, on page four and five. However, the lighting for the parking lot, and when the bid came in, I had talked to the individual that provided us with the bid, that we wanted cameras and lights as well. His bid indicated lights, but I don't know if that also included the cameras. So I sent them a note but did not receive word back in time for this meeting, and I apologize, but that's roughly what we're looking at.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So is there a project for the lights to be replaced in the actual gymnasium itself?
That is correct. The lights in the gymnasium themselves were covered with the Minger grant, and we were approved for the Minger grant, and we are in the process of getting, obtaining the second bid for that.
Excellent, because that'll be a huge cost saver to play. I think you probably would pay more for the lights than you could.
You're absolutely correct. We're on estimating a $300 per month savings by having the lights replaced and having a payoff within five years. Substantial.
Well, I also lend my support. I think it's a good effort, and I know that you've also been discussing some collaboration with the Manistee Recreation Association. So hopefully those opportunities will continue well for us.
That is correct, and we are very optimistic about that. Thank you.
I would give my full support and support in the project. I think the armory is a big need in this community, and we need to support it.
Anybody else?
I think it's a good idea, and I like putting a camera in that parking lot because I'm investigating, I can't keep kids get hurt, all that, and I think that's really important, so I think we should back it up and do something for that.
Anybody else? Being on the revenue sharing board and knowing the flexibility of, knowing there isn't always a lot of money available, do you have any priorities? What do you feel is a priority?
Actually, we have listed them in priority in the spreadsheet on the back. When you look on page four and five, we felt that interior building lighting was the highest priority, followed by the rain system. And then the night lock system is third, the parking lot lighting and cameras would be four and five, and then the resurfacing of that parking lot would be six.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Saying none, thank you very much.
We appreciate your support. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Council, is anybody having objections to supporting this? I don't see any. Mr. Taylor, you got enough?
I do.
Moving on. Moving on. Discussion on the lending the city manager's employment agreement to provide a minimum of 90 days' notice when leaving the city employment. Council member B?
Thank you. Now, this may seem like an odd thing to put on the work session, but we did recently approve some contracts for directors, and I happened to make a special note, or dawned on me that they were, if they needed to leave or they wanted to leave, they were to give us 60 days' notice. So I thought, well, what does the manager's contract say? I looked back at the manager's contract, and it only says 30. Now, being of a certain age, because I happen to be 68, though there's things that I think about in my future that are coming closer rather than going further away, which hopefully would be retirement at some point, not knowing exactly what Mr. Taylor's age is, I'm wondering if he might be in that same boat. Then I wondered, well, maybe we should have an amendment to Mr. Taylor's contract to give us a little bit more advanced warning, because it is very time-consuming, and it's a big job to search for a new manager, should he decide to retire. So I thought I would float this by the council and float it by Mr. Taylor to see if he would be agreeable to amending his contract to have a 90-day notice in the event of retirement.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, I can agree to that, and if you'd like, I can look with the city attorney to bring back some language for council's approval at a future council meeting.
Okay, the only thing we're dealing with is the notice.
Exactly, just the notice.
Just the notice. Do you feel that 90 days is enough? From talking with you, I think you would probably give a lot more notice than that, but do you feel that you're comfortable with 90 days?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with 90.
Anybody else? Any comments? Saying none, very none, we'll, I think you've got enough, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, I do.
Okay, we'll move on to Mark and Ted, I'm going to blow his name, Fracano.
Thank you again for the opportunity. Mark Miller of Manistee or the Chamber of Commerce. I have the pleasure of introducing Ted tonight for this discussion, and I just want to point out that, as I said a little bit earlier, it's a fantastic get to be able to bring the Fracano name and that prestige and that service and hospitality to our community. When I unofficially broke the news here last month at city council with you all, we had a good deal of support and comments from members of our community who were excited to have Mr. Fracano coming to our community. And so I would like to introduce Ted to share his vision, and I can tell you as well that with my time working on this project and working with Ted and Ginny Pelton and many others, that it's been an enjoyable endeavor to meet and work with Ted, high-energy, lots of ideas, and I'm hoping he will be able to share those with you and also get you excited about this project. So with that, I'd like to introduce Ted Fracano.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Ted Fracano. I live at 17923 Wildwood Springs Parkway in Spring Lake, and this is on behalf of 440 I was in Manistee three years ago looking to buy a piece of property, and I am so prepared, I was so prepared at the time to expand my business portfolio that I expanded into an area that I live. I created an additional restaurant. The Fracano family has a 71-year history in West Michigan of pizza, mostly. And I created a restaurant in Spring Lake, excuse me, in Muskegon in 2002. I bought the building that I'm in, which is a 70,000-square-foot building with 13 acres, in 2009. I just really want to convey a sense that I am very committed to Manistee. And I'm very committed to the long term to Manistee. So the reason I give you a little bit of my credentials here is I am not somebody that says, oh, wouldn't it be fun to do this? No, this is, this is my career, this is my passion, and I have a history of success in this industry. Right now, I'm doing a land development around the building that I'm in called Hartshoring Village, which we are going to incorporate 55 homes right on Muskegon Lake, that's where my Fracano's Pizza is. So my vision for 440 River is quite simple, really. It is to take that neglected piece of property and make it spectacular, and I have a history of doing that. I think I have an affection for taking buildings that are neglected and making them prosperous. And what is the other added bonus is that the city of Manistee has been overwhelmingly supportive of this. There's no turning back from, I'll just go to the bottom of the stage and then I'll go back a little bit, but Ginny Pelton has been very, very respectful but persistent as an advocate of the city, and Thad has even come to Fracano's in Muskegon a couple of times to always make it known that we want you in Manistee. That is very touching for somebody that's ready to invest tremendous amount of money, that your city manager, your maybe director of public works, your chamber of commerce, young lady with Stacy by work, I have a message on my machine that I still have for the first of March. This is a group of people that say, we want you, and that is very powerful to me. So the dining experience at 440 needs to be spectacular, and it will be. But I think what is driving me more than anything is a partnership here in the city of Manistee to be part of this rassass. When I created Fracano's in Muskegon in 2002, quite honestly, Muskegon was falltime. Right now, and I'm not saying that Fracano's created this, but I made it very clear in 2002, as Muskegon was falltime, that with hard work, dedication, and prayer, you can succeed in downtown Muskegon, and downtown Muskegon is prosperous today. This is what's driving me in Manistee. What I am asking for is, because I will invest, I will employ, I will make this year round, and this has been strongly suggested of me, I will create a Sunday brunch there, because it's very important for that nominee. I need help, and it's never, it's very humbling to ask for help, but this is going to be tremendous undertaking that is going to cost a lot of money, and I will make it spectacular, and I will make Manistee proud, but I'm requesting the Oprah designation of the Absolute Property Restoration Act. The gateway into this city from the water is, in my opinion, hidden. The boathouse is the entrance of the city, and it's dark. I don't care what anyone says. It's dark, it's ugly, it's dirty. It should be branded like into the marina. I would love to take this marina and brand it into, or take the 440 and brand it with the marina. There has to be a powerful presence that voters, people say, wow, what is that? I need help. The other thing I'm asking for is additional land around my property. I want to expand the deck, and I want to brand 440 as an inclusive restaurant from the Riverwalk. It seems like the Riverwalk is over there, and all these restaurants are hard to get to from the Riverwalk. The 440 is very hard to get to from the Riverwalk. We need to make a beautiful path, a beautiful entrance, a beautiful staircase to get up to River Street, and I'm requesting additional land. There is some land to my west, to my east, I think there's nothing, and certainly to my south towards the Riverwalk, I'm requesting more land. Now, I don't have the exact dimensions, but I really want the city council to be aware that this 440 needs to be inclusive to the water, to the people, to the marina. that this 440 needs to be inclusive to the water, to the people, to the marina. There's facade grants, which I have been made aware of, the branding, I'm not gonna create neon signs, and I can't, I wouldn't do that anyways. But there is funding relationships and partnerships out there that I'm going to ask for them all. The interior of 440 is totally, totally worthless, but that's okay. The interior of the last several businesses that I bought were ready to the wrecking ball. That is a scare. I'm spending the night tonight, my wife didn't come, and that's fine, because I don't want her hearing all this. But there's a tremendous amount of expense into making this great. So you have my word that I will be at Fracano's Manastee River, that's what I call the place, will be here forever. I'm not someone that's going to create this restaurant, sell it to some impressionable young manager, make a profit, and disappear. It will be, my name will be on this building, Fracano's, that says it all. Someone other than a Fracano will never own this place, that's just how I operate. And I am a working manager. I don't just sit at the end of the bar and have a cocktail or seven cocktails or 12. We are all working managers. The other thing I want to share with the city, because I think this is important in the restaurant business, I have more debt and I have more dysfunction. And I, like I told you, I have three children. If my children are doing something wrong in Spring Lake, I want to hear about it. If Fracano's Manastee River is doing something wrong, I want to hear about it because I will be here forever. My name is on the building, and I guarantee you, I will make that property spectacular. But it's not easy, but we'll do it. So here I am, making a statement, introducing myself, and I, I would not be here if it wasn't for the city of Manastee reaching out to me as often as they have. That is a very unique thing for a municipality. You all should be very touched by what you have created in the last several years here. People are wanting to come to Manastee. More people are coming to my restaurants in Muskegon, talking about what is happening with Manastee, not because of Fracano's, but because of what's gone on over the last several years. There is a, there is an excitement in this city, and I am so proud to be part of it. So I just want to introduce yourself, myself, and we're gonna have fun, I promise.
Does council have any questions?
We're about to make a couple of amendments. Sure. The city assessor has gone through the boathouse a couple of times, and it would qualify for the Absolut Property Rehabilitation Act. And just to refresh council, that's an area, that's a statute that you can use for up to 12 years to hold the existing taxable value stable, and so you wouldn't capture any new taxes until the old program is gone. So it provides some financial flexibility to the property owner to reinvest that into his property. So that's a, you know, that's not hard to do, it's a two-part process. First, you have to establish an open district, and then actually come back and do the Oprah certificate. So that's, that's an option. Ted also mentioned the DEA asset grants, it could be helpful. Jeff and I took a look at what property might be available if you would like to purchase it. There's certain property to the south, there's property to the west that we talked about, some type of easement, so he could have connectivity from the restaurant to the Riverwalk. So it's all really good ideas. I would propose that we work together with the chamber, the economic development director, and Mr. Fracano will come back with some options to present to council for consideration. The time was just to kind of, you know, get the pulse of the council to see if you were interested in working and partnering with Mr. Fracano to try to make this a reality.
Well, I definitely am. Thank you for being here, and thank you for taking on that project. Is there anybody that would be against working with this project? I don't see any.
Thank you.
Your, and I'm sure staff will come back with something that will be workable for all of us, so we'll be forward to that.
We'll provide you options.
Well, this is, Fracano, I just wanted to say thank you for choosing Manastee. And again, because obviously you're in other cities, and I think it's great that you see the beauty and the value of our little town and are willing to invest in it. And again, I have some experience in the hospitality business. It is not for the faint of heart, and it's not for the, for people without vision or without industry, and it looks like you have all of those things. So I think you're gonna be a great part of our community, so I hope you're gonna be thinking about moving here as well. So there's great real estate available for homes.
There's a fantastic home that my wife has been looking at, but I'm not telling you where it is because somebody behind me will send all the information. I'm very, I'm very, my children are 11, 13, and 15, and they are kind of entrenched in Spring Lake, so.
It's kind of hard to show your enthusiasm through this mask.
Yes.
But I think everybody sitting here on council today is very excited about you coming here and wanting to start this, excuse me, project. And I know that we all look forward to working with you and doing whatever we can.
Thank you. I, I'm very excited. I mean, I'm probably one of the few people buying restaurants, but I don't want to, I don't want to diminish the fact that it meant something when Stacy called me on the first of March to say, the boathouse is now X. And when Ginny called me, Thad came in, and Mark Miller, and all of you, and the city Trust me, a lot of this is gonna hinge on Jordan and West Shore Bank. So, but I, it's, I'm too entrenched now. I have too many great relationships already in a very short period of time. And tomorrow, I'm gonna spend probably 12 hours in the place with my construction guy that I've been using. And it's not for the faint of heart, but something just is telling me this is gonna be awesome. So thank you.
Well, thank you again, and we look forward to working with you.
Okay, bye-bye.
I do have some questions, I'm sorry. It's probably more for Mr. Taylor, but please, I'd love for you to listen to me. I would like to know, there is some land that you talked about acquiring, and you talked about easement, are you talking about, if there's, this is more important, Mr. Taylor, at this point, if it's city property, do we have any obstacles in the selling it, or can we just grant them an easement?
Well, those are two separate questions, but at our staff meeting this morning, the city attorney wants to look at the grant that this city received from the state to construct the marina, to make sure there's no conflicts with selling the property and, you know, what the reach is of that marina property. So that's, that's one thing, and it's been researched. And the second thing, the easement, if, you know, it might be a combination, if he buys property, he still needs to go across an area that we want to reserve for future use. And when Jeff and I looked at, we need about 10 foot south of the Riverwalk to retain free utilities and things like that. So that could be a possibility that we would enter into an easement agreement with Mr. Fracano, so we can have that connectivity to the Riverwalk. So two different things that we're looking at.
Okay, well, I just think it's important that we remove any obstacles, because this is a great project, so I wanted to ask those questions upfront.
Right.
Anybody else? I think so, I think we're done. Thank you. I'd like to bring up, doing either doing a resolution or a letter of support for the senior center. Millie requests. Mr. Spanzki, you are a volunteer there, can you tell us how important this is?
So if you're not aware, the senior center is up for their village renewal, and it's, and it has been for several years, a .03 per thousand, and that provides services for our seniors over 60. They're also asking for a new additional village of .0175 per thousand, and that's to provide the senior nutrition program, which is, you'll likely recall, Meals on Wheels. That service has been provided through the Traverse City Council on Aging, and they, for financial and other reasons, are going to discontinue the operation in Manastee County. So without that additional village, we have approximately or roughly 117 clients that will be without this valuable service. The service is for eligible seniors 60 and older, homebound and unable to leave the home without assistance, unable to provide meals by themselves, make or participate in con-retched meal programs, able to feed themselves, they have to be able to feed themselves. And no one is available who would or be willing and able to provide meals on a regular basis. So that's the criteria for the Meal and Meals Program. Again, it would be devastating to our community. We would be literally putting people out of their homes and into care facilities if they didn't have the service available for them. Sarah Howard, if you know her, does an absolutely amazing job with her staff, it's a small staff, they operate excellent programs, even through the COVID, they've adapted to be able to service the senior community. The Food Bank, for example, has increased from about 160 families to about 270 families. They provide vegetables once a month, and then they provide dry goods and a gift coupon for meats, and I think meat and dairy. So they do an amazing job for our community, it is incredibly valuable for them. And just want to know, is they're not able to count themselves, okay? So they need us to be able to sing their song and to help them get this village path so that they can continue their good ways.
Any input? Anybody have objections to doing a resolution or a letter of support? Seeing none, Mr. Taylor, can you make that happen?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Next, I just wanted to bring up, after listening to you, the talk about marijuana and the lack of licensing last week under me. I want to kind of get council's input on, do we need to offer licenses to those, more licenses to those that already have licenses or are working towards that? Do we want to do that? Do we, to me, we're kind of holding them back. They want to grow their business, and we're not, we don't seem to be in a position where we can support that. Do we, do we want to add more licenses? Anybody have input?
I think we need to do whatever is to, so they can start their businesses and stop, and stop pulling them back because we need businesses in the city.
I agree, and again, I think originally, we didn't understand a lot of the regulations as they were coming out of the state when we started our process, and I think we're learning as we go. One of the things I think that's important that we didn't, weren't aware of is they need to have more than one license in your business. So when we established those licenses, we thought they were only going to be X, they were only going to be a marijuana, medical marijuana provisioning center or retail. And what had happened is we had realtors and speculators and people that were getting ready to start businesses actually bought more than one license. So that basically brought a scarcity to it. So we have businesses now that are ready and able and willing to go into full business, but the licenses aren't available. So I do think that it would be a good idea for us to be able to allow for those who already have a license to be able to apply for a secondary license within their property or facility.
Any other comments?
Well, I think what it boils down to, how many would we allow additionally? I can certainly see an argument for, for the party that came forward at our last city council meeting. Certainly, they are making a tremendous investment in our community as well as in the industrial section of our town. So I think it would be really prudent if we at least increase the recreational license, licensing by one. But that's, that's what our challenge would be, if we are going to do it, then how many are we going to allow additionally?
Is there anybody else? Mr. Taylor, did you come back with something for us that would work?
Yes, I'll bring something back.
Be fair across the board to everybody, appreciate it. I have nothing further, does anybody else have anything else?
I have a couple of questions for Mr. Taylor. First one is, has a contract between the DPD workers that you've been signing?
No, it's under review by the, by the steelworkers.
Okay. And that, in the budget, there was?
Nine firemen.
Count Tim Colson, that's the public safety director, and why are we on seven now? Seven is patient to run a fire ground operation every day, seven days a week?
According to my discussion with Tim Colson before last, and also subsequently with Chief Cameron, yes.
No. See, like today, there was a fire at the highway end, and then there was a call to Brandy End, Pilot Thompson went to the Brandy End because I don't think there's any left to run a ambulance now.
Well, that's, that's utilization of resources, and with that fully involved structure fire, the fire department called a mutual aid, and they made allowances for not only enough people to be, you know, involved in fire ground operations, but have people available to take any EMS calls on our behalf in the city. So it's, you know, we have mutual aid agreements specifically for those types of events, and then it just becomes either the fire scene commander, whether it's the chief or one of the captains, to properly manage their resources. So I did just a real quick follow-up with the chief at the fire scene in mid-morning, and we just talked about what he'd done, and I was convinced that he had addressed all of those what-ifs and had done a real good job of it. So certainly, you know, with our staff, we can't be everything to everybody, nor can Manastee council or Pilot County, that's why we have those very robust mutual aid agreements just for these situations.
Okay, so how much money are we saving by not having two of the firemen?
We were, we were looking at first-year savings, I think it was around $35,000 or $40,000.
And we have, we're gonna have 12,000 pretty soon?
We're gonna have 13?
Yeah, I mean, there's not 13 yet.
No, we have, in the process of going through hiring process. And I think their, this partner is close to making a conditional offer to one employee or to one prospective employee.
Anybody else have anything?
I just want to commend the fire department, they did a really good job. I did discuss my district, and I did watch the I did discuss my district and I did watch this morning. That scenario, and I just got to commend you guys. It was a wonderful job. We communicated that with the city police. And our department had a very busy day there, so good job.
Thank you.
I would like to also commend Bruce at the Water Department. Hughes Street has, has had a lot of work done to it lately with, you know, sewer lining and hooking up to a new water main. And earlier this week, or whether it was today, it's Tuesday, yesterday, can't keep track of the days anymore. Yesterday, Bruce came around and because we weren't told that we weren't going to have water, he came around, he knocked on everybody's door to let us know that we wouldn't be, that the water was going up. And gave us everybody an explanation. And I saw him running from house to house. He did a great job, and I just wanted to commend him for that. Thank you.
So what do we do with George Merrick? Get down into that, from everything?
Yeah, I connected Spicer with the city attorney last week. And to make sure that George fully, or the city attorney fully understands the options available. So the city attorney has submitted a FOIA request to the state to provide documentation that permits our value. All we've got is verbal verification. We want to see something in the resume. And if they, if they don't have valid permits, you know, then we will then take enforcement.
Is it maybe a bit of a timeline or is it?
Well, they have the normal timelines. And I don't have that right off the top of my head. I think if you have to turn around a five-day time, you can ask for an extension to, to provide the records. But they knew by state statute, they, you have timelines that they have to follow.
Are we going to do anything with that? That river walk, and he thought it was the last name. And he said, you know, we were bonding and all that. But are we going to go after this company and insurance company? And they, they changed all their terms now?
They've denied it. I don't know what recourse we have.
Do you want to give a consideration or do you?
Not that I know of. We haven't discussed that. I don't know what the best, what the risk reward is for spending dollars on losses.
Yeah. Then maybe they're going to change the terms of what the Riverwalk and the fall is, if that's relevant.
Right. And I think, you know, in retrospect, they probably, when we had our stage, they probably took a very liberal interpretation of it. And provided coverage where they might not have been or required to do so. And I think with this second one, they will get it through different lamps.
Yeah, and the blight, we got worked it because if I'm mindful that guy just switched his power down. Nobody sees in the garage. He got a hundred refrigerators or something on his trailer.
Yeah, we're getting a lot of compliance. I think the last just month and a half alone, we've had 52 new cases and citizen contacts. So we are, and with the blight, it's, it's tall grass or as significant as a blighted structure. So we, we have the whole, we are getting compliance and we're taking the work out.
But I don't, I don't need to pay us on that trailer?
I'm not sure either, we're into it. But the opposite, we're working with the citizens. We're being patient. We're trying not to give them citations, but we can't get compliance in the rule of sight.
Could be impatient. Was that, it'd be impatient?
Okay, I appreciate it.
So I appreciate it.
They are out there working very hard.
And I'm glad Jeff, that he got the PD and some of those places. There are people out there on 14th Street. So maybe some people will have them. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I think it would be nice if the, somebody from the chamber reached out to Rusty Carey at the highway. Once again, we can't afford to lose another business. And they have contributed a lot to the community. So just to see if they need anything or help with something.
Anybody else?
I've got some, I understand that the DDA was interested in allowing for people to be able to purchase alcohol and have that consumed on the Riverwalk. And, and I thought, Mr. Procano, if you think about that, it'd probably be something that would be a positive for a new business going in to be able to provide that service.
Yeah. What you refer to is social districts. The fire state is allowed for because of the pandemic. We've had one virtual meeting on that. And we're doing a little bit more research on it to see what can, what we can do to support that. So there is a working group discussing that, so.
Yeah, I think we, we enhance our Riverwalk, you know, again, make it more vibrant if you had more reasons to go down there other than just to look at a book when it takes you.
Yeah, because there's some, there's some limitations because you have to have, with the licensed holders, you know, that are particular to that. So there's, there's a limited area that we could use for that social district. But we're looking at it there. You know, we're trying to make it happen, but we got to get the research and information back.
Anybody else?
That's my thanks to you for doing that. And to the end, the highway end too. Maybe one without. Me and Gav will get to eat breakfast at the Paintway. Thanks for that.
Anybody else? Well, I want to thank everybody for being here. It's kind of nice to be back in person. Virtual meetings, I guess we get business stuff, but being in person really, really makes a big difference. A lot of positive things we talked about tonight. Looking forward to a lot of good things happening in the future. With that, we're adjourned.